Good evening, lady and gentleman. Thank you for joining us at our August 6 meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room. In case of mishaps, now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Dollar General. May I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this point, we have one holdup before we would consider concluding SEER and maybe even considering a final determination of approval or not. And that is, just kind of Department of Health has not weighed in for conceptual approval of proposed septic. If you've all been reading the correspondence, there's been back and forth. If I'm correct, where it appears, one of the big sticking points appears to be that there's an insufficient separation of the affluent or the wastewater line from the proposed stormwater lines. The stormwater pipes are perforated. If we all, we can all remember that the site is actually a pre-emergent wetland with about five foot of fill on top of it. So I believe that their concern would be that since it's basically muck soils that won't absorb anything, if there were to be a mishap with the affluent, it would flow and go right over into the perforated pipes of the stormwater and then convey possibly untreated septic, untreated waste into several watercourses. And I believe that, it was mentioned to me by an email correspondence that they have, you know, county water. And I pointed out that the neighborhoods around there don't have county water. Many of them have wells. So this could also potentially contaminate into the well. So we were unable to move forward until the applicant and the Department of Health come to some kind of resolution for a system that we can evaluate properly for SEER. So given that, since Mr. Todd Hamulich comes from Ohio, after our agenda meeting on Monday, I suggested to him that he did not have to attend until this was up. But I did tell him that I would convey any public opinion or public comment, and also that if there was any comment from the consultants or the board. Anything from me, Mr. Sotero, or you, Ms. Paladaro regarding this?
No, you summed it up, you know, excellent. And I did have a conversation, actually Jim Napley from the Board of Health called me this morning, and he was going to call, you know, the engineer, and they're just having some issues getting on the same page. So.
Politely put. Thank you. Am I right about what's the real problem there is the distance between the two?
Yes.
In Mr. Lungo's letter, he pointed out that 25 was the minimum that was required, and that 50 was just recommended. I'm assuming that because, that would be just for any kind of soils, but when you have these kinds of soils that are hydric basically, that you'd want to have much more separation because anything would cause it to drift over.
Yeah, and that's, you know, one of the issues. The other one is, the Health Department is asking them to do percolation tests in the native material because if it doesn't, if it doesn't percolate, you know, the native material, even though they're going to dig out, dig out the old material, you know, the fill that's been put in, put in new running bank gravel material, if it doesn't perk over time, it's going to become, yeah, a bathtub, and then could, what you were explaining, if it's not percolating into, you know, the ground as the new soil becomes saturated, it could migrate into the storm drainage system and then get onto other people's, you know, lands.
I have a kind of silly question, but the soil won't perk?
Uh, yes.
The native soil?
Yes, yes, we know that.
So would the Department of Health be trying to tell them they have to dig even deeper to remove more soil?
Uh, I don't know what the outcome's going to be, but there are ways to deal with it, but I believe the site is very, very tight to put in the type of system that, you know, would mitigate it. But I'm going to leave that to the Board of Health to explain that to them.
Thank you. And Ms. Paladaro, any of you comments? Are there any comments from the board at this point?
No.
No comment.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? This is Dollar General on 9G, or proposed Dollar General on 9G. There being no public comment and no further comment from the board or consultants, may I get a motion to adjourn this to our next meeting, which would be August the?
20th.
20th, thank you.
I so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Al's Yard. Applicants are seeking a site plan modification, basically converting spaces that are now used for what we'll call junked cars to be used to sell actual used cars, kind of cobbled together from the site. May I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We received, last time when we were here, we asked for a few changes to be made to the actual set of plans. If you recall, we did not require them to, when they made the changes, to submit enough plans for all the board because they were pretty minor, just showing where the trailers would be located, labeling the sales office, and then asking, just as a question, whether they want to change the sign. And new plans were submitted. Pete and Victoria went over them. So did Mr. Signa and I at our agenda meeting, and it looked as though they had satisfied everything. Consultants, did you have any comments to add based on the new plans that we saw?
I don't.
Ms. Paladaro?
No.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Mr. Signa, you were there, you seen the plans, any comments?
No, but you were going to contact the CAC, did they have?
We indeed did. I forwarded the reply, the CAC had reviewed it and had no, oh, that's right, thank you. I copied you two. Just so everyone knows, the, we, this was a type-two action owing to the fact that there's no actual physical changes being made to the stacks except for a couple of trailers being moved. So we made no referrals, but we did, as a courtesy, send it over to the Conservation Advisory Council, and I heard back from their chair, Carrie DeGroot, by email that they had no issues with it. I sent that on to Ms. Knapp, so it's in the record, and also to Mr. Signa, just to satisfy or make sure that he knew as well. So any other comments from the board?
No.
No.
Would anyone like to speak about this application? There being none, may I get a motion to close the public? Yes? Anything?
The microphone picked up on my comment to Donna. I was just checking to make sure you had part two of the EAF ready.
Oh. Who has this application?
It'd be me.
But we can close the hearing and then?
Yes. May I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need to fill out part two of the EAF.
Oh, I don't do that.
Here, just hand it to me and we'll do it. We'll do it. We'll do it.
Is it in that file here?
Chris is our resident expert.
Oh. Yes, Chris has become our resident expert. Any paleontological down quite well. Who has this file?
It's me.
There should be a part two in it.
Yeah, it should.
Yeah, but since I didn't pull it, it's hard. You can't.
It's hard.
It's going to be on the low.
It's under. Sorry.
Pass that along to somebody responsible. Wow. Yep.
Yep, it's there, it's coming.
It is there.
There it is. When you go to part two, which is on page two.
Page two, part two.
They'll put it all back together.
How much of this do you want there? Do you want page three, part two?
You should, the first page should?
Is it there?
No.
There's part two.
We do not have a part two, we only have a part one. Oh, there we go. There we go. Okay. The proposed action create a material conflict in adopted land use planning or zoning regulations? No. Proposed action result in a change in the intensity of the use of the land? No. Will the proposed action improve the character or quality of the existing community? No. Proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that causes establishment of critical environmental area? No. The proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will proposed impact, will the proposed action impact existing public or water supplies or public and private wastewater treatment facilities? No. And no, thank you. Proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Nope, it's confined behind a fence. Proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No. Proposed action result in increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Now you may read the resolution, Mr. Murphy.
Okay. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the Planning Board hereby adopts a determination of nonsignificance, finding that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board hereby grant site plan amendment approval to the project as shown on the site plan title, Al's Yard, dated May 10, 1993, last revised July 24, 2014, subject to the following condition: payment of all fees and escrow.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No motion, no abstains, or nays, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, colleagues. Next item on the agenda, Hyde Park Town Center. Applicants are seeking a site plan amendment for a very significant upgrade to the exterior of the main structure. And Kelly Leibert is here for the applicant. May I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Leibert, if you want, can you catch that on the camera?
Yeah, but it was better.
It was better.
And you can, we all have the plans, we'd rather have the audience outside and the TV see it. Oh, and for the record, Mr. Murphy is recused. Mr. Bigford, the alternate?
Is that okay now?
Mr. Bigford, the alternate, is out of town for tonight.
Can we read it away?
No, no. Good evening.
Good evening, welcome back. Good to see you.
Been a while. I apologize I wasn't here at last month's meeting, but I just wanted to follow up with the board on the two requests. So I know we have a sign request later, and I don't know if you want to include that now, but as part of the architectural approval. So, yes, we are proposing a rather significant modification to the two sides of this building. Obviously, it's very dated. I think Eric Nyler probably did a great job last month of going over the colors, materials, and so forth that we're proposing, and I think it's a significant improvement. Along with that, we wanted to try to do cohesive sign program, wall sign program on the structure. Right now, there's kind of a hodgepodge of fonts and sizes, and I'm sure that if Ted were here, she would make note that likely some of those signs are larger than what's permitted, so soon they'll have to be taken down.
This is true.
So I'll do it for her. So we did provide you with a plan showing new signage, the location of the new signage and the size of the new signage. We would, obviously, each tenant would have to come back and get their individual sign permit, but for purposes of Planning Board approval, we wanted to show you what that would look like. And I think that Eric went over that last month. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have individually on the project.
Thank you. Before I start with the board, Mr. Sotero, any comments?
No.
Ms. Paladaro, any comments?
We've treated the sign request as a blanket request for taller letters throughout the whole plaza. That would only apply to this back structure, but anytime a sign was proposed, we wouldn't have to go through the sign bonus process. It would already be, it would be predetermined, but only for a certain number of tenants, as they've shown.
In addition, I believe that we would also be actually approving the sign that's proposed for the center elevation, which would say Hyde Park Town Center.
Yeah.
In other words, we wouldn't just be giving a dimensional increase, we'd be approving that sign itself.
So maybe we should add that onto the end.
I just, I was thinking about it afterwards, the resolution isn't as clear, I think, about that as it could be.
Right, I said, the resolution notes that all the signs have to come back in for approval.
And this, we'd be recommending, I think we would recommend going ahead and issuing a permit for the portion, the sign that says Hyde Park Town Center.
Okay.
In the discussion at our last meeting, I believe it was Mr. Oliver who said that by making that a particularly prominent sign, that this would then tie in the fact that this is what it's supposed to be, no longer Park Plaza, the Hyde Park Town Center, and if someone's called and said, "Hi, where are you?", and said, "I mean, the street address", they could say, "Oh, in the Hyde Park Town Center." People could then identify it that way clearly.
It'd be nice to brand it.
That's what we're talking about, is helping you guys to brand it. And maybe one day to, I didn't say it, but on your second, I would love to see on your directory signs, it says Hyde Park Town Center on top, then the tenant panels, only because so many people don't realize that the former Edo Sushi, or technically the Berg-Stoutenberg House, the gray building that has now Allstate Insurance, I think, in it, all those are part of the same Hyde Park Town Center. McDonald's is part of that center, so many people don't really clue into that, so.
Well, I'm hoping that the work that we're doing in the new entrance on?
We'll key that in.
The property will really try to tie everything together, the landscaping in the front.
Good.
So we'll see how that looks.
And it's nice to see that McDonald's is underway right now.
It is. It's significantly underway.
We looked and noticed that we had done our approval in May of last year, and it just got started this year, so that's okay.
Took a long time, yeah.
Ms. Paladaro, any other comments?
No.
Let's talk to my right, Mr. Merciliano, any comments?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
Oh, no comment.
Ms. Dexter?
Just that I think the whole upgrade is going to be fantastic. It's going to hopefully revitalize Hyde Park again.
I hope everyone liked the red on the sign.
I do.
Good, okay.
I love the red.
Because we had them clear, or they were, you know, a different color with like black outlines, and actually, the sign company recommended this, and it looked, once they put it on the plan, I think it really looked great.
Yeah, it's what we're used to, too.
It complements, I believe, the new exterior as well.
It does.
At least in my opinion.
It's going to be a significant improvement.
Yeah. Mr. Granger, any comments?
I absolutely concur with Ann's comment. I think the upgrade really looks fantastic. I want to compliment you on that. But I do have to reiterate my safety concern, and that is that I do not believe we should be trying to make these letters large enough to be read from Route 9. That is a very, very hazardous area from traffic, and I've stated this before. So I personally do not believe that we should be granting, you know, this blanket, I'm not particularly comfortable with the way the, and we'll get to that later on.
Yes. The resolution has room for some changes into it, based on discussion.
So if we choose to vote on this tonight.
Yeah. And Mr. Murphy's recused. Mr. Signa, any comments?
No, I agree with my colleagues, and I agree with Mr. Granger regarding the size of the letters. My concern is, and I think Duchess County Planning, even though they made it an issue of local concern, they commented regarding the signs over the stores, that it might become difficult to read if it's too large, and they'll run one into the other so that you'd have to kind of slow down to see where you're going. So I think this issue will come up.
In the letter from County Planning, they specifically cited the Williams letters, which are 13 inches, as being adequate, which is an increase above the 10 inches. But one thing I want everyone to sort of weigh in on, if you'll take a look, the building itself has, it's fairly massive. It's not like huge, but it's a big, long building. And I personally am concerned that if we just allow 10-inch letters, they're dwarfed. I mean, you're not supposed to see it from Route 9, but when you go up the entrance, it'd be nice to be able to look up and be able to very clearly identify which structure, which is the use or the store that you're going to, whether that's a veterinary, restaurant, whatever. I think 10 inches seems awfully small, particularly when you first drive in. You're still pretty far back from that building. So I believe Ms. Leibert was requesting 22 inches, and it appears that the board, that some board members would like to see it reduced down. So we've got, I think we need to figure out what's sort of an ideal size. County Planning mentioned Williams, which is 13. I personally, myself, think, just again, because of the size of the overall structure, I think 16 would be kind of more in character with what the overall building is. It's also, you've, Mr. Nyler of Tinkelman Architecture has made the, I guess I'll call it fascia board or freeze board, where the signs will be. It's actually larger than what it is now.
Yeah.
So if you think about what you're seeing now, if the Williams seems right, it's going to actually be about four, a little bit more inches bigger, wider. So I don't think we want to have the sign look like it's typewriting on there. But before we continue this discussion, let me just first ask, anybody, is there any member of the public who'd like to speak about this application?
I do have one more.
Yes, 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 go ahead.
I'm sorry, last one. The last rendering we saw, I don't think they were, the peaks were the same.
This is the same board that Eric and I were actually rocking on for me.
Oh, is it? Okay, because I was going to comment, it looks balanced now and a lot better than, there was one that was earlier, that Ace was different than the other, than CBS, but it's fine, it's good, I like it.
They're still different on this one. One has shingles and one has vertical type siding.
Yes, that's what I saw.
Eric dropped this plan off today for me. So this was the board that he said, I presume this was the board that he used at last month's meeting.
Last meeting had separate.
Mr. Signa's commenting on an issue that was raised at the last meeting as well.
And they were, it was, they were different, and we were concerned about that, would it, and now you've got them.
He must have made them consistent then. And that wasn't, I didn't realize if that was the case, or I would have addressed that with you.
They're still different up there.
But that's used to me.
You can tell from where you're sitting.
From the center, wait. See the material here?
There's shingle, where is the difference?
But they're different on that board.
It's the, it's the gable end, it's the gable wall that we're talking about.
Because it's still, it's still the same thing right there.
It's still the way your plan is.
Yes, it's showing something differently.
And it's because that's CBS, I think.
One has the like dental molding and the other does not.
Yeah, I think that's.
And Mr. Nyler was saying, let Mr. Nyler, the architect, last time responded because he wanted to not have it be exactly uniform. The shape itself is fairly uniform, but some of the details he changed just to give it a little bit of, as he said, architectural interest. Also, you'll notice that the, the cornice that's down to the very far left is not echoed at the very far right for Williams. And Mr. Bigford was also asking why that wasn't there, and he said the same thing. The entrance to Williams is actually around, so you don't want to draw attention right there where it looked like it's an entrance, you want to make it so that they realize they have to come around.
Around, yeah.
So, does the board, does, does the board have specific issues with what's proposed there with the pediment panels versus the shingles down at the other end?
No, I do not. Actually, I like the concept of showing a little variation within the plaza.
I want to point out that when you have buildings this long, there's actually supposed to be a different articulation to make it look as though it's a grouping of several buildings that were kind of put together. It's not supposed to have one big uniform look, actually, so that's actually in our code as to why to do that. So, any other comments?
No.
Anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Okay, there's a big, there's lots of you out there, but I think I know why, Statsburg Library signs, so we'll be getting to that shortly, don't worry. If there's no other comment from the public, then board, we're prepared to, first, there's no other comments, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. In our resolution, we, Victoria, the resolution that we have up here has a blank for the letter height?
It does, in the, the second paragraph from the bottom.
Thank you.
On page two. So the resolution that you have proposes to grant a maximum letter height of 22 inches for the Hyde Park Town Center sign in the center of the plaza, and then there is a blank for the letter height for all of the tenant panels.
In my, Ms. Leibert and I had a telephone conversation this afternoon, and I pointed out that what we're doing here, it's important for us all to remember, is we're granting kind of the maximum they can go to without having to go to the ZBA.
Right.
If any particular tenant feels as though, say, for example, CBS, because they're at the corner, they're very far from the actual entrance, if they felt as though they wanted to get a bigger one, they could come up to us first and seek a larger one specifically for that, rather than just granting that one being bigger, or they could go to the ZBA for a variance as well. So I think we need, I'd like to see if we can get a consensus for majority to go forward on what the appropriate letter height is, so we can go ahead and get this approved, and then get started on making an improvement that's going to be helpful to our town and community, and also, I think, maybe get some more excitement about getting some tenants. There's a couple of empty spaces still in there, and.
We'd really like to do this this year, and that was his goal. I don't know if he's going to be able to get it done, but I know that would.
We'll try, we'll try.
Yeah. No, I meant on his, on his part as far as construction.
So Michael, can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Because the whole purpose of going greater than 10 inches, okay, an inch per whatever it is, 20 feet, from the roadway is to make it more viewable from the road. And my contention is, I don't want these to be individually viewable from that stretch of Route 9 because of the traffic problems right there. I don't think we should be granting greater than 10 inch, or at least that shouldn't be our rationale. I'm, I feel like the town code is absolutely correct in this case, but I don't think that we should be trying to go greater than 10 inches, because I don't think we should be trying to read it from the road. The purpose of the main entrance sign is to solve that problem.
The, the actual section of code is also refers not just to the speed or the distance, it also refers to the size of the building. And I think that's, like I said, that's just something that I think, for, to me, because this is under the aesthetics section, so that the additional size is necessary per your circumstances such as the size distance from the road, the design speed of the road, or the size of the building on which the sign is placed. To me, that, I'm looking at that as being the operative, again, because I think 10 inches, at least to me, seem small. I get your point, believe me. It's also, this is a, it's not unique, there are others sort of like it, but this is a very special sort of shopping center. It's in the center of town, sort of technically, but it's not a discreet shopping center. By that I mean, it's, there's a lot going on in there. You have Children's Medical Group, you have, as I said, the former Edo Sushi, you have McDonald's. So they have two directory signs, but even then, they've got so many tenants that the directory sign is a little, I had, does it, cluttered?
Yes.
Okay. So it's actually, to me, kind of hard to see, and you're not going to be able to really unclutter it because you just have so many tenants.
I know.
That's the way that is.
That's a long building.
Yeah, it's a long building.
That's why it's unique.
You've got a bank in there, too. So because of that, I worry that if we just rely on the directory sign to supply every bit of information there, that you would still have motorists not able to really see. Again, I'm looking, thinking, once people know where it is, and say, the CBS, you might have some tourists going in there, but it's probably primarily local traffic. Same thing with the karate place, et cetera. But you are going to have tourists going to the restaurants, and I want them to be able to see, if they call where it is, I want them to be able to see which one they're going to, so they can figure out where to park, you know, overall, in the overall site. So I'm just sort of throwing it out there that I think 16 inches is fine, again, because the size of the building. But let me start to the right. Mr. Merciliano, do you have any, do you have a preference for what letter height you'd[1604.83] Let me start to the right, Mr. Merciliano, do you have any, what, do you have a preference for what letter height you'd like to see?
You know, I, it seems to me that the monument sign should pretty much tell you what's in the shopping center. I don't, I don't know how many people are going to be driving by and kind of rubbernecking, looking for some particular sign on a building that may or may not be visible from the road. I don't know, I just, I, I really don't have a very, very firm opinion on it, but I guess.
Well, when you've driven.
I guess we better average them or something and come to some conclusion here, but.
When you've driven by the site, as I said, county planning uses Williams lumber as their template to follow, and that's a 13 inch letter. So that's three inches bigger than what's allowed by code.
And, and their sign, I'm sorry, I don't mean to just comment, but I think.
You can comment.
Feel so big because it's so long. I just drove up there early.
It is, it's Williams lumber and.
Whole storefront, and there, there, I actually drove up and the ACE letters look a little bit larger than 13 inches, so they.
Those got a special variance, those, obviously referring to the normal sized letters, the ACE got it because the corporate logo needed to be bigger, I think.
Okay.
So that was granted.
They do have a significant.
That was granted, I believe, an increase to 15 or 16, one of the two, I've forgotten why. That's why I'm using, that's my 16 inch reference is the actual bigger letters for ACEs.
And our, our real, you know, of course, all of the tenants are of a concern to us, but CVS is also kind of the anchor tenant on the end, and it's important for us to keep them in the town, in the town center. And with lots of options now with new properties, I think there's, it's important for us to, to make sure that they have a storefront. And they are further away from the entrance drive, so you can really see Williams when you drive up.
Right.
There's no landscaping in front, and the landscaping has.
It includes the view, it includes the view, I agree, and the CVS letters right now are already larger too.
They are, and, and it's a concern for them, of course, to go smaller down to a 10 inch letter, for them, or even a 13 inch letter. So, I, you know, I, I sort of loathe thinking about the process of coming back for a variance, and so hopefully we can have a meaningful dialogue about them as well.
Mr. Merci, Mr. Oliver, you have any comments?
I do. When I'm thinking about the, the dimensions of the size of the signs here, I'm more worried about creating a sense of place with the emphasis on the Hyde Park Town Center. And I think a, a size in the range of 14 to 15 would be ideal, because it's, you know, it's two thirds of the size of the 22 inch request. I think that would be, you know, pretty, pretty decent without taking, you know, without reducing the emphasis on the Hyde Park Town Center.
Ms. Leiboltz is also, I believe, asking if we would consider granting an increase just for the one tenant panel down at the end, CBS.
Right, thank you, yes.
Does that, do you want to weigh in on that, or consider it a little bit more?
I mean, I think as long as it would be smaller than the Hyde Park Town Center.
Right, I agree with you, that's, the Hyde Park Town Center should be the dominant sign to me as well.
That's my major concern.
Because that way people, again, can say, oh, you're in the town center, I'll find you. Because actually, most of the parking is over on the north side of the main entry there anyway, so you probably park on that side to do, to reach any of those sites. The rest, all kind of, the other buildings have their own sort of associated parking with it, even though it's all shared parking. So those are good comments. Ms. Dexter?
So, the thing that I'm thinking of is, is exactly the, the name of the plaza, and then just having it in balance, the scale of the building in, and I think 10 inches is too small. I don't know what the right number is, so I would, I'm, I'm willing to go with other recommendations, whether it's 14, 15, or 16. I'm not sure which one, and I would definitely also be willing to give CVS a little bit more than, because we're all used to seeing the big, huge, gigantic sign anyway, so it would be probably something a little more petite.
Yeah.
If that helps. But I think all that will do is balance it and make it.
On the ends.
Yeah.
I mean, and we're all, just so everyone's aware, Williams is code compliant now. So they would not have to come back in unless they wanted to, to increase the letter height.
I think that they're happy with, with where they are.
The newer tenants already are code compliant.
Do we know what the ACE, how big that is?
ACE is, that's either 15 or 16 inches.
I don't have it with me.
I don't, I looked through the file, because this was granted, remember, this was, what Williams had to go through, I shouldn't say had to. The process that Williams went through with the ZBA, because it took them about six months to get the very, we, that's when we changed the sign code to actually allow this.
When we did all the lettering, right, we did all the lettering.
Right, buildings that are set so far back really do need bigger, somewhat bigger letters than ones that are right up the front, and we had only a uniform size, and that was eight inches. So we increased, with the sign professionals we had on the committee, we increased from eight inches to 10 inches, the base, because that's what they felt, given the speed of the highway, it should be. And then we talked, we, the sign professional suggested that we be able to increase for every 20 feet, they are back from the primary entry, up to a certain max, and then after that they'd have to go to the ZBA for a variance. And so I had to find the letter heights in the ZBA file, not ours, because that's how they were granted.
Right.
So I believe that, that the ACE was 15, it's 15 or 16, I just can't remember which, and I apologize, but that's where I got the 16 inches or 15, when I had it in my head, was for that. Because truthfully, Williams, it seems big, but it's not that big to me, and that's just 13. So I thought a couple of inches more would, again, they said, the fascia board, remember, is increasing, that's proposed here, is bigger than what you have now. So, I like negative space, but I don't think you need that much negative space on top and on bottom. It was designed, in other words, to accommodate these larger size, signs, is what I should say. So, Mr. Groninger, I think we know your opinion already, you want to keep it at 10. Nothing you've heard is going to change your mind on that.
I would be willing to go to something like a 12 or 13, as long as, and my recommendation for all, and I don't want to get into the advertising, but we really should be saying, okay, Hyde Park Towns, or CBS at Hyde Park Town Center, or Williams Lumber at Hyde Park Town Center. So people know where they're going, that's their destination. We have multiple plazas, and I don't know how many people even know that, well, that's called Hyde Park Town Center. So I'm more than willing to see that as the largest set of letters up there.
It's funny you should say that.
So as you're driving along, that's what you want to see. Oh, I want to pull into Hyde Park Town Center, then when I'm on the property, the premises, now I'm no longer this long distance from the road, and I can look and see, okay, oh, here's where the animal hospital is. You know, I'm rushing to try and take a pet in, or here's where I want to go for an x-ray. I don't want to try and figure out where that building is from out on Route 9. That's my primary safety contention.
And you shouldn't, we don't want people rubbernecking trying to do that, we want.
But that's what our code is actually implying, and that's actually, unfortunately, that's what we say on our site plan approval.
Well, as, I, I want to make sure you understand, it's not, we want, it's, we didn't do the increases because of the distance from Route 9, it says the primary entry. It's, the issue is, is when you first drive in, then you're still that same distance from Route 9 except by car length, so what, nine feet, 18 feet, you're, you're only 20 feet.
Well, I'm usually on the traverse road, and that's where I locate what's in there.
But when you, when you first drive in, we were trying to think about how far you would see, and I've noticed that even now, when I tell people, oh, Park Plaza's up, it's being changed to Hyde Park Town Center, I'd say 90% of the residents here go, what's Park Plaza? So that's why we want to make sure we create the, the brand name here for you.
And I think there's, I understand.
That's what we're really trying to help you with, is that should be the focus, the name of the plaza.
And it certainly.
And then you seek the individual structure.
Yeah, I think that, in my mind, it's always important to be able to, the way that I drive is to be able to see the destination from the road. And so whether or not you can read it in detail is one thing, but at least to be able to identify where it is.
Right, you know the plaza.
It is in.
Yeah, yeah.
Is important, so I think that's why we were asking for the, for the slightly larger, and, and just for dimensional purposes, CVS is about 340 feet away from that entrance, and so that's, that's what we were.
It's very far away.
It's, it's a fair distance. It's just, it's a unique building. I think you said it appropriately.
Mr. Signis, do you have any other comments to add on the size, letter?
Yeah, my concern is that if the size of the letters is so large that you, the names run into each other, or get anywhere as close to each other, then you're going to be reading a sentence rather than citing a store or an establishment. So, I feel at a disadvantage, because we do not have models for each of these to say, hey, you know, this is what a 13 would look like, this is what a 16 would look like, this is what a 23 would look like. And what I'm hearing from my colleagues is, I don't know what size it should be, it just should be. I don't know how we're going to be able to make that determination without seeing some, some model to look at. What about.
And we hate to hold you up on this.
No, no, no.
Could we grant it without any size thing totally, and deal with that part later?
How would you feel about separating the, the, the letter, the sign package from it, like, or for the actual tenant signs, letting us grant approval for this, or consider granting approval for the facade tonight and the Hyde Park Town Center? And then would it be a lot of effort for you to show like three different letter heights up there?
Well, we certainly could. I actually had the sign company prepare what it would look like with 13. I wasn't able to get it on the board, and it's pretty difficult to see.
That would really be helpful, if you can separate the two, then you can move forward.
Okay.
And.
Let's talk about then what sizes you would like to be.
I like that idea, and the other thing that I was thinking to Mr. Signis' point, it's, it's in whoever is designing the plaza's signs, it's in their best interest to design them so that they can be read. If they're not, if they're not.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
If they don't, if they're, if they didn't go to Sign Making 101, it says you need to have separation between the signs, and maybe it's, maybe the, the one with a lot of letters has smaller letter, has smaller height letters to make it more in scale. I mean, I think that's what we're trying to say, is you can go up to this size, but hopefully they're going to be smart about it, and if it's got a very long name, they're not going, they're not going to wipe out the entire.
I mean, the intent is really, and certainly the owners.
To make it easy.
They're trying to improve it and make it look better, and so.
And also.
No one can predict what size the actual storefronts are going to be.
Right.
But we are, there is another step after this, so if this board were to approve at some point the lettering, we still go before the town on a, an individual.
A permit.
Permit application, so there is another round of review of each individual sign.
So let me ask, if we were to grant, say, a blanket increase across the way to, say, 16 or 15 inches, when the actual sign came in, if we saw it in context, if the board, or any board saw it in context of what the other signs looked like, if it was too close, the board could deny the permit by saying the letters are too large, even though it's been given a maximum, or is that legally indefensible?
I think once you give it the maximum, they're entitled to the maximum unless there's a rational basis. I mean, you could deny the sign permit because the sign doesn't work, it's not visible for other reasons, but I don't think you could do it simply on letter height at that point.
Well, that, we wouldn't do it just on letter height, we'd be doing it if, if in other words, it impinge, say, on the sign next door. I can't even imagine this happening, because the landlords, they're going to have, they have to make their current tenants happy too. You're not going to have Mizu Sushi, Dr. Eye, Doctor, whatever, blurting together where they can't see, because your tenants won't be happy with that.
They won't, and, and if we get started on the architectural improvements, obviously, all of these signs are coming down, so there's going to be a significant amount of time with no signage for these tenants, so that was the purpose of trying to.
Oh, this is true.
Rationalize getting the approval sooner than later, because now I still have to get each individual tenant sign designed, and then submit a permit to TAD, so when the facade is done, we could get those.
We still have to get the individual, right, we still have to get the individual permits done. Right, or rather, I hope a whole series of them done, put it that way.
There's a process still after this approval.
The information the board is looking for is an elevation that shows 13 inches and.
16.
16 inches, and then you also want to know the height of the ACE letters?
Just to, just to verify.
And I, I think, you know, I'm happy to provide it, but I'll tell you that I think it's going to be nearly impossible for you to see the difference in three inches on such a long building.
And on the scale, on, of the size.
It's going to be so difficult, yeah, so.
That's what I would think.
If it was a smaller building and you said, you know, if it was in, like red cap cleaners, if you said, you know, show me the sign difference, you can see it.
Could you just do a portion of it, like take the middle?
Yeah, I can, you know, again, I can provide it to you.
I think, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I think if you do them at different sizes, we're going to see the separation of the names you're using now, which, which will give a sense of, of how easy it might be to read individual signs.
I, I would feel good with just a, a picture with the, the front, the Hyde Park Town Center sign, and then maybe like a 13 inch letter to the left of it, and a 16 inch letter to the right of it, and, you know.
For perspective.
Exactly, so you can get a close, you know, a close shot and see the.
Maybe a word, one word, on each side.
Okay, is everyone in agreement with that?
That would work.
So we would just take this.
Middle part.
Yeah. And show it with a different size.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have another comment, which has absolutely nothing to do with the signs, per se, and, and there's nothing I think we can do, but I'm a little bit confused over the title of the shopping, because we met last week regarding new code, new district, in terms of the, what we were calling the town center, was this intersection.
No, it's, it's the crossroad core district.
Right, right, and I understand that. And when I hear town center, and I'm hearing what we talked about last week, I'm thinking, gee, the town center, to me, is where you have the public events and all that stuff. And I'm seeing this more as Hyde Park Center shops, maybe with H, S-H-O-P-P-E-S, with shops on both sides, and great, we know it's the commercial district, and I know there's nothing we can do, and I know what you're going for, and I understand the center part.
You're going to put it on the record by gum.
Yeah, and it's bothersome.
Just had to, just had to get that out, right?
I did, because I think, I'm thinking of this intersection as the town center, this is what everybody's trying to get back to, and, and, and this is.
I should add, I think I already did an email to you, but what you, what was approved originally is Crofton Muse, changed its name along the way to Hyde Park Town.
Centre.
Centre. They did old English with Towne and C and T R E, so, and I believe that.
I grew up in Hyde Park, I, I think I've done that before, so all Hyde Park schools, and when I grew up here, now I'm dating myself.
Dating yourself.
That was Champion Factory Outlet.
It was.
That was the town center, so we went to Grand Union and shopped, and we went to Champion Factory Outlet, and.
Did you go to Grants?
So that was the town center.
I, I believe that what we're dancing around here is that this is the historic center of town, because this was where the town existed basically until the 1940s, when it grew exponentially down the highway. But the economic heart of the town, the economic center of the town is down there, and you're right, this is shops as opposed to, but when my parents moved to their community, their planned community outside, or in Houston now, when I first, this was, they lived there 23 years, it said town center, and I was like, there's nothing there. Zero. But then it turned out to be, now it's a very vibrant, walkable little center area that has shops, restaurants, and the municipal functions are not there either, they're actually located out of the town center completely. So I know what you're saying, but that's not the issue. Here's a question I have, so that we can move forward tonight. What if we gave, gave a max right now of 13 and then revisited the issue, so we could redo the resolution in two weeks if we saw a change?
You mean to go higher than 13?
Would that change, would that require a new public hearing?
The, I believe the sign bonus, let me see, does not require a public hearing.
I didn't think so.
And speaker.
Well, we, this was typed as type two.
Right.
We still, I think, oh no, I didn't give you any.
I do too, that way we could see what it is, and you could even that way then show 13, 16, 18, we could see what the difference is, and I think Chris was really correct. We're really looking for is to see how it looks in context with both the building size, which we can get, but also more importantly, the Hyde Park Town Center, see, to make sure that creates the bigger area.
Yeah, I like that.
And.
I'm also going to show you the CVS.
I was going to say, please show the CVS, because that way then we could do, we can amend the same resolution to grant a higher dimensional increase over to CVS right then.
Here's, here's where it gets a little tricky, and I don't have TAD next to me.
Uh-oh.
To, to make it sound tricky, but normally we do the sign bonuses along with the site plan, so that there's not a separate sign permit application, but if we do it.
This, this has to be a separate sign permit application anyway, because the tenants will come in for the individual tenant panels, it's recognized in the resolution.
Right, so the individual, so for the Hyde Park Town Center, we were going to approve that as part of the site plan, and the others will all be individual.
Right, but we would, so if we grant tonight, tonight 13 inches, and then just amend the resolution in two weeks, if we wanted to, based on what you would submit, we wouldn't need to reopen, or hold a new public hearing, because we'd just be revising an already approved resolution, correct?
Okay, yeah, if, if we do it as revision to an approved resolution.
But we, would we have to justify legally then?
Oh, yes, we'd have to put in new findings, we'd have to put in new findings, this can't just be blanket.
Why we just changed from 13 to 16?
Yes, 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 that would go into, that would go into.
Requirement.
That would go into the resolution, don't worry, so.
And we would provide you with additional.
The rationale, et cetera.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What about 16 inches subject to aesthetic review? You know, in other words, aesthetics is what we're talking about.
Pretty much.
Why don't we grant the maximum subject to it not being too?
No, because you can't go down.
You can't go down, you have to grant.
I vote for that one.
By the way, members of the audience and television audience, I apologize, signs are a real bugaboo in Hyde Park, because of the way our code is written, and just the way the development occurred in advance, that's why Ms. Leiboltz is being so patient with us. So we're, my proposal is to just grant, to write tonight, do the 13, it's already written in, it, it complies with the county planning, even though they, it's a matter of local concern, no supermajority, it's just up to us. Then with more information, or rather not more information, just a better graphic idea of what it, what it, what it would look like, we could then amend the resolution at a future date, because you can get started on your facade.
We can get started.
And, because you can't put the signs back up until it's done anyway, so we can make sure we resolve that, that's okay with you two then?
Yeah, then at least we can get the drawings done and the building permit applications.
Thank you, I love working with cooperative applicants. Okay, does everyone seem comfortable with that for tonight?
Yes.
Okay, who has this, who, this is?
In the bottom paragraph, after P L L C.
I mean, you've lost me.
The last.
Second page.
Second page.
Second page. Okay, because in the preamble, it talks about it also, so, on page one, all right.
So bottom of the second page, after P L L C, you're going to add, "And the Hyde Park Town Center sign."
I still have not found you, I am sorry.
After P L L C.
All right, go ahead.
You're going to add, "And the Hyde Park Town Center sign, as shown on plans prepared by GNS Group."
Hyde Park Town Center sign.
Oh, you know what, that should actually be after July 1st, when, yeah, yeah, they're both dated the same date, so it doesn't matter. As shown on plans prepared by GNS Group.
Prepared by?
G, like Garvey, and like Nancy, S like Sam Group.
It can go where, where you told it to as well, it doesn't have to go after the, because it dates the same, okay.
Dates the same.
And then the, in the second paragraph, it should be the 13 inch letter height, that would be 13 there, where it's blank, correct, Ms. Bolidaro?
Correct.
And then if we want to amend this, we'll have different, we'll have, add, we'll supplement it by adding new findings, new material, and change whatever number it is, if the board wants to that night, based on, okay. Are you ready to read this resolution, Mr. Groninger?
I am, because of a lot of whereas, we'll make it a little simpler here.
Read the, the bowl, because that's long enough.
Absolutely. Resolution granting final site plan amendment approval for the Hyde Park Town Center facade improvements, August 6, 2014, Resolution 7-10F. Where is an application for site plan amendment approval to improve the facade of an existing shopping center located at 4246 Albany Post Road, Hyde Park, New York. In the town center, historic district has been submitted by the planning, or to the planning board by Kelly Leibolt, and I'm going to move on to the whereas's, whereas's, whereas, whereas. There's a number of references to our town code here as the background of all this. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the board makes the following findings with respect to the requested bonus, to permit a maximum letter or symbol height of 22 inches for all present and future signs in the plaza, and 24 inches for the sign on the northwest corner of the structure. One, with the exception of the proposed Hyde Park Town Center sign, the additional letter height is not appropriate, given the structure's distance from the road. The existing sign for Williams Lumber is 13 inches tall, which is visible from the entrance to the plaza, and is appropriately sized for the structure. The larger Hyde Park Town Center sign will serve as identification for drivers on US. sign will serve as identification for drivers on U.S. Route nine. With the exception of the proposed Hyde Park Town Center sign, the increase in size is not appropriate due to the size of the buildings upon which the wall sign is being placed. If all the signs were permitted to have twenty-two inch letter, tall letters, the signs would run together on the fascia, making them difficult to distinguish from one another. Be it further resolved, the board hereby grants the applicant a sign bonus to permit the Hyde Park Town Center sign to have a maximum height of twenty-two inches. Be it further resolved, the board hereby grants the applicant a sign bonus to permit a thirteen inch letter height for present and future sign panels for, now we state twelve tenants, is there any chance that's going to change, or should we be specific there?
If it does change, they have to come back for.
You're gonna have to make a change, you're gonna have to come back for us, if you change the number of tenants, just want to emphasize that.
To control.
Now, you can't control that.
Yeah.
It's up to twelve tenants right now, but if you get more tenants, they'll just have to come in for.
And I haven't counted it, that's why I'm emphasizing it.
The reason it's limited like that is because what you've proposed shows twelve.
Right.
And it shows them separated, so.
Well, it sort of defeats, though, then the par, not to, I know you're reading the resolution, but the paragraph that says that they would run together, we can argue that next, next month.
Okay, I'm just emphasizing.
If it's limiting it.
I'll continue with the bowl, located in the southeastern structure, as shown on the plans prepared by GNS Group dated seven, one, twenty fourteen, entitled Hyde Park Town Center signage plan, be it further resolved that the board hereby grants site plan approval for the facade improvements, as shown on the site plan entitled Hyde Park Town Center, prepared by Tinkleman Architecture, P-L-L-C, and the Hyde Park Town Center sign prepared by.
GNS Group.
G-N, is it G-N-S?
The GNS Group.
Okay, T-N-S Group, still got that wrong, all right, we will have it correct now, okay. Also dated July first, twenty fourteen, and authorizes the chair, is authorized, designated to sign the site plan, upon compliance with the following three conditions, one, payment of all fees and escrow, two, revision of the plan to include a planning board signature block, and three, revision of the plan to include the following note, this plan is for facade improvements only, all other features of the site plan approved on May twenty-eighth, twenty thirteen, remain in effect. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions, no, oh wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy's recused, so there's one abstention, and he's not even on this anyway.
There's one absent.
Right, one absent, as I should say.
Yeah, we're marked as absent here.
So, okay, Ms. Leibert, do you, do you think you can get some stuff ready for us, like a week before the next meeting, or do you want to wait till?
When is the next meeting?
August twentieth.
Okay.
Since you're already sort of in the pipeline, we don't need it, you're supposed to be submitting tomorrow, we don't need it by tomorrow, we're familiar with this.
I'll try to get it by the end of the week.
Great, but next Wednesday would be fine, too.
Okay.
Because we're just looking, if I got everything from my colleagues, we're really just looking to see a comparison for what the appropriate letter height is, and I apologize, I should have asked you for this earlier.
That's okay.
To see, to, to show the visual changes, we could have gotten through this tonight, probably, but I wasn't really thinking about that.
Great.
As we went through.
Believe me, we want to work with you and get this through.
Um, we'll do the thirteen, the sixteen, and show you what those, what the dimension differences say, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, the next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Beatt and Russo, applicants are seeking a lot line alteration to expand a property located at five-two-five Cedar Lane, and Mr. Beatt is here, can I add anything to what I just said?
Nope, that's fine.
Making a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from the consultants?
Uh, the only comments are, um, we had a couple that we, that we felt that we could made a condition of approval, should the board consider that, and that was just revision of the plat, include the planning board signature block, and the revision of the plat to update the town of Hyde Park zoning requirements to show the current dimensional requirements, but, other than that, we were good.
Thank you, and Ms. Pauldo, any comments?
We've.
Condition's been added, yes, please explain that one, yeah.
We, we added a condition that states, "This approval is for subdivision approval only, and does not authorize the use of the property for any use which requires site plan or special use permit approval, and for which such approval has not already been obtained, the location of existing structures are shown for informational purposes only." So, before you, you have a site, a subdivision plat application, so you're only looking at the change of the property line, the surveyor was required to show all of the existing structures, which may or may not be legal, you're not looking at them, so the note just makes that clear, that you haven't, you know.
We're not implying approval of your, your chicken coop, chicken, raising hens requires, yes, and typically that's, we don't know about these things, the town, until neighbors complain, I doubt your neighbors are complaining, because I know where you live, you're pretty far out there, so, all we're saying is, is that by approving this, we're not saying that we've already looked at the chicken, we're not.
We don't, we don't know that there are chickens or there aren't chickens.
We don't, just the structure.
All we know is that there's.
There's a structure.
A chicken coop shown.
Yep.
And, and there's no, there's no notice of violations issued for this property.
Correct, correct, Ms. Moss confirmed that, so, any comments from the board, let me start, Mr. Signer?
No comment.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Any comments?
No comment.
What do you want from the public, like to speak about this application? There being none, making a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this file?
I do, resolution to approve a minor subdivision plat, Beatt and Russo Lot Line Alteration, resolution number thirteen dash forty-six A, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the plat entitled Lot Line Alignment for Lands of Rich Beatt and Paul Russo, prepared by Robert V. Oswald, dated June tenth, two thousand fourteen, and authorizes the chair or his authorized, designated to sign the plat after compliance with the following conditions, one, payment of all fees and escrow, two, revision of the plat to include the following note, this approval is for subdivision approval only, and does not authorize the use of the property for any use which requires site plan or special use permit approval, and for which such approval has, has not already been obtained, the location of, of existing structures are shown for informational purposes only.
Second.
Three.
Nope, nope, a little more.
Three, revision of the plat to include the planning board signature block, and four, the revision of the plat to update the town, town of Hyde Park zoning requirements to show the current dimensional requirements.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, now, what this means is, is that when, before you go to file, you have to add three things to the survey, and here.
Zoning code out of date, all right.
Here, just take, take my resolution, take my wife, please, take my resolution, you'll, that will, that will, if you can talk to your surveyor, he'll know what to do, I assume, because these are standard, and then, once all those conditions are, those three conditions are met, then you'll come in, and that will authorize me to sign, one of the things is for me to have a signature block, or, and or someone from the board, if I'm not here, then, once you, once it's signed, and you go and you file it with the county, and you're done.
So I, I gotta come here to get it signed first, on the next, another meeting?
Not even a meeting.
No, no, no.
You're done.
During the day.
You're done before, you're done before us, you just bring them in during the day, and you'll, you'll actually speak to Ms. Knapp, our administrative assistant, and if you have any questions, she or Tad can walk you through this, but it's pretty easy, and you'll, I don't, I don't remember how many of these you need to have, there's a certain number when you file for subdivision.
A Mylar and.
Is it seven?
Seven, seven paper copies, so to math.
Yeah, and so one will be a Mylar typically?
Yeah.
Mylar is a, like, thin plastic sheet, you know, it'll show the same thing versus the paper copies you have now.
Survey all.
So, we won't be seeing these anymore, it'll just be me and, for the file, and, and some of the copies are delivered to both Mr. Sotero's office and Ms. Pauldo's office, and then the town records.
The only thing I just got a question on is on this subdivision, the approved resolution, it's got, uh, New York, the day, and of, I guess, the month, and it says two thousand eleven, do I get to change that?
I can't see what you're.
Donna had sent me a.
Yeah.
That's a sample, that's a sample.
Yeah, that's just a sample, you know, the dates have to obviously be too.
He'll, he'll put that one, put the date on.
Yes.
Yeah, the date of the resolution.
Yes, 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 right, that's a sample of what the signature block looks like.
Okay.
Because we haven't updated our samples for a while, yeah, we don't typically have to provide those, most of the time we get them already done, so that's, that's why we haven't, it's probably about, I guess, three years since we've had to supply one, so, um, thank you, good luck, good luck getting new land, and if you have any questions, you have my number two, just call me, I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Oh yes, the actual resolution, next item on the agenda is Stewart's shop, number thirteen, and you've been very patient, oh, you know what, would you mind if I, we got through the other McDonald's, we could see the other Hyde Park Town Center real quickly, I just realized, we can do it now, because we're through the public hearings, Ms. Leibert, do you want to come back up? We also have another, the second directory sign, the town center is applying for, which should be located by the entrance of the new McDonald's, and our color copy was a little off today, hence McDonald's is hot pink, and mine.
Nice, very nice.
Which it shouldn't be.
Very nice.
I prefer it.
Is that the new corporate colors?
No.
I, I really don't want to go back to them and get that as another color, it just wouldn't go well.
So, what we would be doing tonight, we have a resolution prepared that would approve this second directory sign, it's going to be lit, I take it the same way, Ms. Leibert, the lighting will be up in through here, it'll shine down?
Yes.
Right, that's what I thought.
The lights, yeah.
And the only change, it was pointed out by Ms. Moss, that the only change that's required to make this code compliant would be to change the physical therapy letters to being blue or red, as in, the one, an emergency one, or in the blue of children's medical group, so, I've changed the resolution to reflect that, because all the other, to exhibit design unity has to be through similar fonts, or similar color, or similar shapes, and this way, all the lettering would be either blue or red, is everyone, everyone be comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other issues that you see with this? Any comments? All your, the color's off on everybody's, I'm sorry, the M should be yellow, there it is, there it is, there's the real one, Ms. Leibert and I had a conversation, and they had no, the applicants had no issue with changing, by the way, the company's called Hyde Park Physical Therapy, you know that, right, they're just gonna say physical therapy on it?
I don't know why they put that on their logo, so I'm not.
Okay, maybe they're going to change.
Well, speaking of change, I just, I will proceed with this this evening, but we all know that St. Francis Hospital has changed their name.
I know.
We may have to come back and.
It doesn't say St. Francis, but, but you want us to go ahead and work on this tonight, right? Okay, let me find, I have this resolution, if I can find it.
Wait, so, the, the St. Francis is the one that's changing from?
No.
The physical therapy.
Black to blue. Oh, but the, okay.
And, and we'll leave St. Francis the way that it is, but we know that we'll have to come back with their panel on, we weren't able to get that panel from them expeditiously.
Okay.
So we'll, if we can review this and.
I thought they were changing the negative and making their space on that.
You have, um, in the Freihoffers section, don't have the sign provision on this sign.
No.
The, these represents, this sign represents the tenants who are entitled to signage on this monument sign, this plaza is unique because it has two entrances, so there's other, there's.
I understand that.
Right, but you have two shops.
Wait, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy's recused from this application.
And you really can't be talking.
This too?
Yes, this is still the same, it's still the Hyde Park Town Center, sorry.
Okay, take back what I said.
But you could go speak as a member of the public, but we don't, we don't have public comment, we don't have public comment on these, so, my apologies, that's the way it is.
Well, you understand the problem.
Yes.
You have two more shop locations, okay, but you don't have physical spots to mount their panels.
That's correct.
I would assume you would want to lay them out on this drawing.
That, we, we went through this at length with the property owner, and so, these are the tenants that he would like to put on this particular monument sign, and I understand that there's vacancies, and there are other tenants there, but they're not, however the leases are structured, these are the tenants who are entitled to representation on this monument sign.
Okay.
I, I know.
We're just trying to forewarn you, you just got to go back through the process, that's all.
Well, unless those tenants aren't entitled to signage on this monument.
Correct, and I'll point out that those tenants actually have separate wall signs, they were, we were approved those, and you can actually, if you're going south, you can see them pretty well, actually, from, if you're going north, you're not so lucky, but again, this is, this is a matter of landlord and tenant relations, not us, we're approving what they're showing us on there, so, um, let me read this resolution, resolution dash fourteen thirty-one, Hyde Park Town Center, whereas the applicant Hyde Park Town Center July eighth, two thousand fourteen, submitted an application for one monument freestyle standing sign, as approved on the Hyde Park Town Center project as the second freestanding sign, six oh six four dash oh two dash nine six five nine five six, in the Town Center Store District, and whereas the applicant has agreed to modify the sign to exhibit more design unity by making the following changes, change the color of the text for the tenant panel, quote unquote, "Physical Therapy," from black to match the blue of the children's medical group, or the one in emergency one, and whereas the sign is received a variance for symbol height and width, and is code compliant, now therefore be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the sign permit be issued within ten days of this recommendation as specified in the note.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Everyone carries one absent, one absent from Mr. Bickford.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for being, this lets her go home and stay away until the end of the meeting, now we're up for Hyde Park Town Center, yes, you're ready.
You got to push Murphy off completely.
There we go, thank you.
Stewart, you meant to say.
I'm sorry, Stewart's.
Do you want to go to the library?
Pardon me?
Do you want, do you want to be nice and let them go?
Are you all here waiting for the library sign? Oh, okay.
Not all of them.
Let's re, let's rework it, who has the file for the Statsburg Library sign?
I do.
Giving yourself the easiest and the nicest one all night.
That's right, the most fun.
Um, just for reference for everybody, the Statsburg Library has a beautiful sign, I'm really, I'm honored to see that someone's being recognized on it, I'm really happy for you, thank you, and we need to grant a couple, again, this sign is not visible from nine oh nine G, so it doesn't ordinarily need a sign permit recommendation, but because it needs some dimensional increases, we were able to grant them based on aesthetic merit, and I have to say, it's a really lovely sign, I talked to Paul, myself, over it, I like the fact that he worked in the Gothic windows for the copper Gothic building, it's a really nice job, it looks great, so, any comments from the board, you all had a chance to take a look at it?
Yes.
It's beautiful.
Okay, let's read the file.
Town Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution granting request for dimensional increases for proposed signage pursuant to town code section one oh eight dash twenty-four dot two dot dot F, subsection two A, Statsburg Library freestanding sign, August sixth, two thousand fourteen, resolution number fourteen dash two seven, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the board makes the following findings with respect findings with respect to the requested bonus to permit a maximum symbol height of fourteen inches wide by eighteen inches in height for the Gothic window graphic, and a maximum symbol height for the library's logo to thirteen inches as cited below for the proposed Statsburg Library freestanding sign. One, the Gothic window graphic on the proposed sign well reflects the window shapes and detailed woodwork of the Carpenter Gothic Historical Library structure and consequently deserves special aesthetic merit. Two, the Statsburg Library logo within the graphic window, the Gothic window graphic, books and reading glasses, well reflects the nature of the library's mission and therefore deserves special aesthetic merit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie unanimously, congratulations. When do you guys get to put it up?
Yay!
Good.
Well, Paul, Paul, Paul works pretty quickly and he's eager, and it really is a pretty sign, I'm glad to see that you put that up there, it's also more visible than what you've had, so...
Yeah.
Well, we had too many sandwich boards.
That's what I kind of figured, yes.
It's a great opportunity for us to promote our program.
I'll, I'll add that when we changed the sign code, one of the things we did was, it was actually at Ms. Dexter's request, there's so many of the sandwich boards that we started allowing those on the freestanding signs, because otherwise it gets cluttery, and you're right, they blow over, they're not easy for you guys to maintain, so this worked out very nicely.
That's good. Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, now do you want to come up and do Stuart's, or do you want to get with the one last lady, I'm getting your Mrs. Garzetta, or?
Is that a question?
It's fast.
Yeah.
It's real fast, are you Ms. Garzetta?
No, I'm representin' Hudson Silver, it's a margin.
Oh, you have, you have two for both Garzetta and, oh, you're just, you're Horton?
Horton.
Or Garzetta.
Oh, you are Garzetta, okay, I'm not Mrs. Garzetta, I'm sorry. Who has this file? We, we, we have recommendations from Ms. Moss for site plan waiver, and we almost always follow through. And just for the record, I have gone by the location of the house, the solar panels will not be visible from the river, which is why you're in the SASS in the first place. So, who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
Site plan waiver for Garzetta residents, resolution number fourteen dash twenty-six, whereas an application requesting waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Gary Garzetta on July twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, for the property located at fifty Fuller Lane in the Town of Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 whereas the changes are not significant in nature and are in character with the neighborhood, and whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Garzetta Residence Regarding the Specific Request As Submitted To the Building Department on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen by Mr. Garzetta, owner, fifty Fuller, fifty Fuller Lane, Hyde Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to copy the resolution for your records?
Yes.
Just so you know, if you come and do this again, if, if you speak to Ms. Moss and she says she's gonna recommend a site plan waiver, you don't have to come in and wait all night.
Okay.
I know it's breathlessly thrilling to hear us talk, but...
I know, someone said that maybe there would be questions, and I wanted to be here just in case.
No, no, it's always smart, but because we all live in the town, we know where the house is, you're in this state, the state set up this district, and it's supposed to be protecting views from Vanderbilt or Roosevelt or the river, but it's described in our code because no one's mapped out where those sites, specific sites would be possible to see, it covers a really broad area, and you just got caught in the broad area.
Okay.
But thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, without further ado, I promise, it's all yours. Wait one minute. Are you Ms. Horton? Okay. You're with the observer, but you're not Kristen Thornton, right? Okay.
Kristen Thornton.
Okay, welcome back.
My name is Chad Fowler with Stuart Shops.
Oh, you might have to actually open it up and turn it on, we, we don't like to run the battery down.
Yeah, I turned it on.
Yeah? Um, oh, there it is.
There it is.
There we go.
Again, Chad Fowler with Stuart Shops, we have revisions to the plans that we submitted, I'm not sure when we submitted last, but...
Recently.
Recently submitted. And I'll just go through some of the, some of the highlighted items recommended by Morris Associates and the board. We did change the angle of the entrance on the south to alleviate some congestion when you first come in, it was kind of a sharp turn, so that was one of the first things we did. We added a sidewalk coming from the north, entering the property, for walkers. We showed on the plan, the red line coming around is the area of construction. We did add trees back into the landscaping plan, we made several changes to the landscaping plan. We added one, I think, six trees along the road, which were not on the original proposal. We changed the location and shape of the rain guard and the plantings of that. We did add a patio and tables at the recommendation, recommendation of the board, now they want to see tables. We did show the truck movements for the tanker truck that enters and exits the lot. It does show that it does use quite a bit of each entrance as they enter and exit. We did not alter the lights that much, I know it was recommended that we look into C-Lux lighting, and we could not find that light in an LED version, so at this point we left our lighting, we did alter a little bit for the property line, to have lower foot cans of the property line, but we did leave the original type of lights, LED.
Okay.
Those were the major changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I'd like to, just, you did a nice quick summary, but I want to go ahead and offer a little praise and love out there for you. You actually did, and I, I was looking at, when I saw the new plans, I went through all my, all the comments that we heard at the May twenty-first meeting, and pretty much you answered and addressed every one, including what was the, the memo, the memorandum from Ms. Axelson from Morris Associates. She, she suggested that you provide kind of a three D of what it would look like, and you said you'd not do that, but I'm not really sure that's required. Part of what we were trying to figure out was what the landscaping would look like, and you've significantly altered the landscaping, you've given the trees back that we needed, we wanted to see, I believe you're putting seven red maple, or seven maples in there, red maples?
Yes.
So you've got color, you've changed some of the actual shrubbery that's inside there, and probably most important, I think, for the concern of the board from what I heard, because the rest of it is just aesthetic, is you changed, you're changing the entrance there to what, because many people that we've talked to, anecdotally, had experienced some problems there, so we're gonna let Mr. Sotero's office make, make sure that they think that this is, adequately addresses what the problems that were there, but it's a big change from the existing pavement to where you're having it now. So I congratulate you, you added the sidewalk, the sidewalk's only added to the north, but I believe, if I heard, if I'm going back through my notes correctly, it appeared as though we had two people who said that would be fine, based on the first meeting. But other, everything else you did looked good to me. I might add also that you're proposing a sign now that's part of the package, I believe?
That'll be a ZBA.
You need to get a ZBA variance first, so you're not gonna put this, you're just gonna show a site, a sign location, and then you'll come back for a sign permit once the ZBA gets its recommenda, once the ZBA acts. Correct?
Correct.
And your ZBA variance, because this has been forwarded to us, so I'm asking, I'm discussing this right now, equally too, the variance you're looking for, an increase for the height of the prices, I believe, as well as for what we'll call the swoosh, or the...
Swoosh, yes, exactly.
Is it just the swoosh that you're seeking the increase for, or are the...
We're showing ten inch letters on the sign.
It's the, the gasoline pricing.
The gasoline prices are twelve inch.
I think I saw twelve inches.
Twelve inch.
So you'd be looking for us to also make a recommendation for a two inch increase? Any, any variance that's required, that it's a dimensional increase, the ZBA is required to have us weigh in, they don't have to pay attention to us?
Correct.
But, so you're seeking both an increase of a graphic symbol, the swoosh, as well as the actual pricing for the gasoline, the fuel, I should say the fuel, because it's not all gasoline, okay?
And just as a note, the stone on the bottom of the sign, we did add to the bottom of the canopy, that was...
Correct, that was also, listen, I, as I said, you've done an admirable job, I think, put it that way, we'll hear from my colleagues. Mr. Sotero, any comments?
Yeah, yeah, a couple, I think what we're, what we're hoping to do tonight is type the action, send it to county planning schedule.
We're ready.
Schedule hearing, and, I mean, we're fine, I mean, the plans have been updated, you know, we'll probably have a couple minor, minor housekeeping items, but they've done a very good job, you know, addressing all the prior comments. Chad, I just had one question as I was looking at the plans a little bit further, and I had someone else from our office take a look at them the first time. Are you guys repaving the whole site?
The whole site, yes.
The whole site?
Yes.
I'm just curious, why are they tearing up, because it shows on a pavement section, it shows where they're gonna put down, you know, new binder, and, I mean, they're not really gonna tear up all the asphalt, I mean, aren't they just gonna grind the top and just...
Correct.
Repave the top?
We'll mill where there's a sidewalk or concrete.
Yeah, and then you have some new pavement areas, obviously.
New pavement, that's a standard detail.
Okay. I'll probably just make that comment, you can put like a note on there about, like, milling, like, existing, and that's, and that's fine, but, you know, other than that, I think they've done, you know, a good job, I was hoping maybe we could approve the two ninety-nine price on the sign.
Yes, if you want to lock that in for the planning board members and consultants, I can guarantee you'll get that two inch, just teasing.
I know, so, all right, but other than that, you guys have done a really good job, it'll be nice to see the site.
Improve.
Improved, I mean, not that it's a bad site now, but it'll be better.
Yeah, but this is, this is, it's not considered a gateway, but it is an entrance to the community, Teller Hill is defined as a gateway, but it's, it's, you're leaving Poughkeepsie, you come into Hyde Park, it's nice to see some improvements in through this area. And before the meeting opened, I noted that Ms. Moss has told me, and, we'll see if it happens or not, but Ms. Moss has told me that the two adjacent parcels will be coming in for site plan approval shortly. They are, both have some violations and can clear them up.
No.
And can clear them up by coming in for site plan approval, so this sidewalk, in other words, won't be to nowhere, because I believe that when they come in, we'll require a sidewalk to connect into Big Meadow Lane. And again, this will actually benefit you, because now kids can come down without having to have their parents say, "You can't take your bike or walk because you're on Route Nine," they can take the sidewalk all the way down.
I'm glad it'll be used.
Yeah. Ms. Paul, do you have any comments?
The only legal comment at this point is that, under the code, the sidewalk is required to be provided along the full frontage, unless the planning board waives that.
So, we have to make our resolution.
If you do want to allow the partial one, you'd have to...
In addition, I believe it was actually Ms. Dexter said she'd be fine with just going it to the, to the north, the connection, but it's important to note, too, that there, the, there's a drainage swale that's being changed and altered owing to the changes to the site, and that the sidewalk would have to do somehow, there's a conflict between sidewalk continuing into that area. And we, if, if the board feels it's important, we could have them stripe a certain way around, or stripe a sidewalk, paint the sidewalk, something, stamp the asphalt differently, but I'm not really sure there'd be a lot of use in going, myself, in going further to the south, but that, that's just one opinion on the board, we'll hear what the rest of the board has to say. Anything else? Let me start to my, let's start to my left this time again, Mr. Sign, any comments?
Yes, the sidewalk, and I think it should be across the entire front, there's, we just heard that the neighboring businesses are going to be coming in for, for issues, and as a result, we're gonna be talking about sidewalks there, too. Recognizing that, the residents are to the north, but the possibility of development to the south is clearly evident now, this would be the time to do it, and if we start to say, well, everybody will wait and wait and wait, then when the time comes, there'll be no sidewalks, and we'll be waiting another round. So, I'm not ready to waive.
Would you like it to go all across the, continuously? Okay. Is that the only comment?
Yes, that's my only con, I do appreciate what, what everybody else did say regarding the attention to, to our concerns before, particularly that entrance, which is, is somewhat hazardous, as people are trying to get in, and it's to Stuart's advantage to make it easier, so I commend you guys as well.
Mr. Sotero, can you take a look to see, you know, what you think of the improvement around there at some point? Looking at turning, looking at car radiuses, whatever?
Oh, yes.
That one section, because, like I said, I'm not an engineer, but it looks to me as though it's a lot, it's considerably improved, but I just want to make sure that you pass, someone passes an eye at it professionally.
Yes, they will.
Okay. Mr. Murphy?
I, my only issue on the sidewalk thing is I think that the north has to be done now. Moving the, you know, some kind of striping to the inside, and actually moving the sidewalk in away from Route Nine, I wouldn't object to that. I think that's for safety reasons, wouldn't, I wouldn't object to it at all. And I would also be okay with the provision like, you know, just making a flat surface where we could put a sidewalk in should be called for, in other words, if, if there's another sidewalk to the south that connects to...
Like a phase.
Yeah, that it would...
Reserve an area.
Reserve an area.
For a sidewalk that's required.
Flat that was pre-made, so all it'd have to is pour concrete.
Victoria, can we do that?
Similar to what we did for Roosevelt Fire District. You gotta mention we did that on nine G.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, remember, I was, I was recused on that application, so I don't know.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with that, and I think that's a good compromise.
Okay.
For what they do, because obviously if something develops to the south, it's in their best interest, too.
Sure.
But, we've seen a lot of pictures drawn over that area.
The only issue with that is that it's, we can reserve it, but there needs to be, there's no mechanism...
Right.
...to require them to build it. When it occurred with the fire station, I believe, because it was a public entity, the idea was that some entity was gonna go seek funding...
Right.
...for a sidewalk.
Can our legal beagles create a, a mechanism?
We could, we could request a performance bond, but that would be the only thing.
Because otherwise, you, you can't hold up a certificate of occupancy for a future phase, so they'd have to do a performance bond and deposit it, which would then sit there year after year, until, I mean, that's...
And you may as well pour the concrete there.
Right. I agree, though, if you're not going to require it, you should at least have it shown that there, it can be created if the need arises, but know that there's no way to get them to build it if they don't come back with a site plan amendment approval.
But again, I think the whole logic of this is, if you have it on there as a proposed sidewalk, then you can, it's duck soup to just come back later if something does develop down there, it's in your own best interest to add it, and you probably would anyway.
Well, on the south side, grading wise, I could easily put a sidewalk there, between the entrance, it's difficult.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with the entrance, just, you know, making a stripe or something there, that's...
A stripe where, though?
On your parking area?
People will park against that curtain.
I, this is the thing, is I'm, I'm, Ms. Dexter and I were just speaking, and it's, if he can do, if you can do it to the south...
I'm willing to put a sidewalk.
I'm not as concerned in the center, because, well, it's also, we're talking then about people just walking up to go to different locations. My real concern is trying to get people to walk from either side into your store, so once they've reached where there's asphalt, as long as they hug the side, they'll figure out a safe way to do it.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, on their own, but they'll, they can figure out a way to do it, I mean, people are logical.
I'm willing to do a sidewalk, you know, to the north as we're showing, and then to the south.
That'd be great.
Good.
Thank you.
That's the whole question.
I think it's important, because if another applicant comes in, they're gonna say exactly the same thing, it's not even gonna be a discussion, we're gonna save space for a sidewalk, and everybody's gonna have to save spaces.
We need a sidewalk, okay. Thank you.
Good, and he's a grable.
Any other comments? Uh, Mr. Murphy, any comments?
What, did the board just potentially agree to?
We're gonna add a small section down here on the south to, to, just, just to get anybody into...
Then they have to walk through the Stuart's, and then out.
Yeah, and that's fine.
That's because, because...
We're only talking about one, one property.
Yes, and let me just, let me just make certain, for clarity purposes, what we're talking about is, in most cases where we require the sidewalks to exist along the front from each side of the, each lot to lot, you're talking about an area where there's, it's probably denser, like in the town center, where you have a lot of shopping opportunities. Let's recognize that in this area, this is at the very southern tip of our town, there's not a lot of shopping opportunities around there, it's doubtful that you're gonna go to Stuart's for ice cream, or tobacco, cigarettes, and then walk over and say, "I'll buy a car." What we're more concerned about with here is, is that there's an, there's an existing neighborhood in the, off Big Meadow, that those people would come in and they would walk to Stuart's itself, so it's both navigating in there, but also then navigating inside the site, so as Ms. Dexter and I were just talking, you don't, I'm, we're not sure you need a sidewalk, sidewalk all along the front, because it just doesn't, you can use this, the asphalt, I also, people are gonna, some people are gonna be parking there, let's, we, we know that.
Yes.
And I, I think you don't want to have necessarily pedestrians conflicting with people coming in and out to get their gas. So I'd rather they went along the sides. I like the way you shaped it toward the store. Because that's where our concern is more reaching the store rather than just reaching the lots. That has to be in there. But given the fact that there's not going to be a lot of potential future development.
So the board will consider a partial waiver?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
That's what I said.
Thank you. Mr. Groninger?
I do have one question, and I apologize if this was brought up before. I'm looking at the latest drawings. And I don't see, and maybe somewhere we can put a note that just says that the fire extinguishing, the auto fire extinguishing devices over the canopy will not be visible?
Oh, the rack itself is above.
He means the things that point down.
Yeah, the things that point down have to be fourteen feet off the ground. So you will see the little stubs coming down to that depth.
Okay. Well, I was more concerned about the big stuff showing above the top of the roof line.
What I would call the rack or the plumbing for it. It's all above the canopy.
Even though the rise of it's, I mean, what is this? It looks like it's a total of seven feet from the bottom edge of the canopy to the top edge?
Yeah.
It's more than seven feet high?
Oh, no.
Seventeen.
You mean the equipment within the roof line?
Well, no, I was saying it's basically contained up in the canopy area, correct? The nozzles come down a little below.
That's right.
But is it above the shingled area?
It's above the ceiling of the canopy, which is the fourteen foot six.
But it's, but it's below the top.
But it's below the top?
Oh, yes, below the top.
Right. That, that's my point. It will not be, it will not be visible other than the nozzle. If you can put a note like that, that's fine.
Are the satellites in there as well?
There's no satellites.
Okay.
The tallest portion is a, a bottle that contains the, the powder.
Right, CO2 or whatever you're using, yeah.
Three to four feet high at the most. So we can put a note. I mean, it's not going to look any different than what you see here.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the new drawings we got are truly correct because we got sandbagged on another set of drawings one time. I'll leave it at that.
The building will show details on the fire suppression system.
Yeah, that's fine.
We, what Mr. Groninger was referring to is we thought we were proving something that looked like that, and then we saw all the fire suppression equipment dangling around everywhere. And we were upset by it. We were upset by it.
And I'm just trying to prevent that from happening here.
Thank you. Good comment. Anything else?
No, I'm good with it.
Ms. Dexter?
I look forward to this.
Yeah, I, I'm, I love the improvements that you've made, and I think you really took all of our comments.
We're happy to work with you.
And, and did a really nice job. And, I mean, just to clarify, I, I, you know, with the sidewalk, I think that that is, I like the way how it leads in to the site and directs them away from, from the entrances. And if you did something exactly the same down below where it comes in and kind of follows the, you know, like you do here, we follow that entrance line. So it doesn't just dump them out into the intersection. It would carry them up to the store. Because it is entirely possible that there could be, who knows what's going to be next door in the next twenty, thirty years. You know, that could be something that actually is busy and needs to run next door to Stewart's all the time. So I like that idea. But I don't need anything across the center. And I really liked the landscaping, the, how you, we were concerned about the landscaping and how you've woven that in, especially along the front. But the pop of these two beds off to the sides are really nice. I, I think that's, that's going to give us, again, you know, just a nice visual. So thank you.
I told you to hear a lot of love tonight.
I guess. One thing I didn't notice on the print, I just wrote it down, is we should put in a bike rack as well. So there'll be a bike rack somewhere by the picking area.
Nice.
As an addition. Because we have a sidewalk now.
Excellent.
You might find the back, the bike rack coming in useful with merit students once you, you know, have a more accessible way to. They're trying to increase the use of bikes on campus. Don't ask me why. Mr. Oliver, any comments?
Again, just agreeing with my, my colleagues. Did a great job. I, I like the stone detail you added to the, to the pumps. Just one comment about the walkway to the north. I just, I just want to make sure that that can be connected to because I know there's some significant grade change in there.
To the next step.
Yeah, I, I just might want to take a look, make sure we're not just ending it in, you know, in a hillside. That would be my only thing.
It's ending at your property line, correct?
They have too much.
It's outside the property line. It's in the right of way.
That's what I thought.
Part of it is. And the contours, you know, it might get a little steeper beyond the property, but I think there's room to.
Oh, yeah, wait a minute, hold on a second. I just noticed that. I don't think we can have it in, you know, the right of way. We're going to send it to.
But they have to go to DOT.
I'll get a DOT permit for this job anyway. I have to pave, so I need to get it just for that.
You, you, they're, they're changing the, with the rip rep swell is. That's, you've got to get a DOT permit anyway.
We'll be well involved with DOT.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the elevations are on the, on the neighboring site, but just, I just want to make sure we're not going, you know, right into a bank with a.
Correct. Yeah, we'll make it usable.
The neighboring site will also have to figure out how to.
But that's what we're asking is that, is that they don't put it in such a way that the adjoining site cannot
Correct.
map up to it.
It's a good point. Anything else, Mr. Oliver?
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mercicliano?
No comment.
Well, you heard mine already. I think you did a fantastic job. You've heard it echoed by my colleagues. It's really nice when we work with people who respond like this. And you provided the narrative. Jennifer, I should say Ms. Howard provided a narrative as well, plus your response letter was very detailed. I appreciate all of it. And I'm looking forward to starting the same public hearing and seeing this get started. Yes, Mr.?
One quick question, Chad. When they're doing the paving and, you know, the milling and stuff like that, are they going to shut down the store?
No, generally we'll, we'll, you'll do half at a time, even half of the gas pumps at a time. So we'll stay open during. And we don't let the, a little different with the blacktop. We don't let it cure for two days or anything like that. We'll live with the scuff marks you get getting on it early, just to stay open. Yeah, we'll get the compaction.
I guess what I was thinking about is, and I, I guess this is more of a thing, you know, for you guys, but in terms of it, do you need any kind of signage or anything to let people know that, you know, one half is closed and entrance is closed and you got to go to the next one or?
We have movable, movable parking signs. This is Stewart's parking with arrows and things like that that, and we also have fences that we use that have directional signs on them.
And it's probably only a, like a one or, you know, a two day, well, you're going to have to like mill one day and then.
It's pretty good.
Okay, so it's not like it's a long-term, you know, duration. It's like a day or two. All right, that's fine.
I, I do have one question. This is, I've been thinking about it. Do you guys keep track of the number of cars or, and, or vehicle trips either per hour or daily? And do you know, if, do most people enter in from, they're heading north from the south or do you, do you know?
I do not. I can ask probably like our manager or district manager.
I'm just curious as to.
But they wouldn't be able to tell me the percentage. Like, they would just be kind of a guess.
Anecdotal.
It's just an anecdotal question because I, I'm always wondering, we, when we see uses like this, it tends to be that if you're on the opposite side, you get the morning traffic where it's easy to go in and out. And on your side, you tend to get the afternoon or evening traffic, I'll call it.
Or it may change during the day for.
Yeah.
And that's what I was wondering.
Probably what it is.
Because they have a change lane there.
One is busy in the morning.
That's right. You do, and you have a wide change lane. That's true. So you can get in and out right there.
So you get a lot of people going that way in the morning.
I was just curious if you find the information. It has nothing to do with this. It's, it's just if you could get an answer, I'd like, I'd like to know. So we're ready, we're going to type this action and send it out for referral?
Yeah.
As well as set a public hearing tonight. Who has this file?
I do. Resolution classifying the action referring the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. Steward shops number three, one, three, thirty-six, forty-eight Albany Post Road, August sixth, twenty-fourteen, resolution number fourteen dash thirty-two. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECRA and declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of this, of the project and directs its secretary to send notice to all involved and interested agencies. And three directs its secretary to refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section two thirty-nine dash M of the general municipal law for comment and review.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And would you like us to set the public hearing for two weeks or do you want to wait and give everybody a three day chance to respond under SECRA? In other words, we could set it for two weeks, but then we just have to hold it open because the, all the agencies are allowed three days in which to respond. Because I'm not really sure there's going to be a lot of public comment on this, to be honest with you. And so it, I don't know where you're, I believe you're driving in from some place fairly far away.
Albany area.
Oh, so we can set it, we can set it for two weeks. And if there's any public comment, you can, you can embrace that. But it'll, again, we'd have to keep it open until we receive all the information back, responses back from any of the involved agencies.
So there's, so there's no reason to do an expedited review because you have to wait?
No, 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 there's way too many. So, plus I have a feeling that DC Planning will want to take a look at everything on this fairly carefully, knowing DC Planning. So would you like to do this in two weeks or do you want to?
Yeah, two weeks would be great.
May I get a motion, a motion to set the public hearing for August the twentieth?
So move.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. And I believe that when we did, when we filled out the referrals, there were, do you have those numbers or? There are.
Maps?
It's on it.
Yeah. We've got one, two, three interested.
No, which ones say maps? It's just only the involved.
Maps is Dutchess County Department of Planning has maps. Fairview Fire District maps, New York State Department of Transportation maps is three. No maps. Hyde Park CAC maps.
The fire inspector.
And Town of Hyde Park Fire Inspector maps. Five.
So you need five new sets of plans. Right to circulate the rest. We won't, won't require any maps.
It's helpful if you deliver them in envelopes, prepackaged.
Actually, six ones are DC planning. Never mind.
Yeah, they were in there.
We counted them. It gets them out faster because they, it's not three days from today. It's three days from when they're sent. So, but at any rate, again, thank you. It's a pleasure working with you and we'll see you in two weeks.
Did, did the board want to address the area variance request?
Oh, we've got to discuss it. We've got to discuss it because I, I remember I'm required to send a letter to the ZBA. What kind of letter do you want me guys to write? Are you recommending that the swoosh be approved? And do you think that the pricing needs to have two more inches increased? Do you want to do it? Can you explain why you want two more inches from the ten inches that's allowed in pricing?
I, I think one vehicle speed and the distance off the road from the, the sign, it is up on a little bit. Where our, was our reasoning? I mean, we'd really prefer sixteen.
Well, if you do the price, maybe.
Twelve is about the smallest.
Lock in two ninety-nine for Hyde Park, yeah.
Sign or the Stewart's part of it?
The, the price part of the sign. The Stewart's part of the sign is only the little graphic, the whoosh. And I'm fine with the whoosh personally.
Yeah, I have no problem with it at all. I think it's.
It looks balanced. It looks nice. And the two inch increase, anybody have any objections?
No.
No.
No, I don't mind. I wanted to keep the price thing.
I want to keep, I was just going to say, it's, part of it is, is that you do, you're in a fast, vast part of the roadway there.
Yeah.
I believe it's forty-five. The people go sixty.
And they are.
And you are set back. You are set back.
And they're sleeping around a turn at that point.
Yep, yep.
I have no problem with the increase.
Okay, so you heard what kind of letter, I'll be, I'll prepare a letter our next meeting and vote on it, and we can also hold a public here, or start the public hearing process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe drive back tonight.
I will, thanks.
The last item on our agenda is a brief, oh, whoa, 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 I'm sorry. We still have one more site plan waiver to do. Horton. This is also for solar panels. This is actually a property on Garden Street, which is not visible from any of the river or the two historic sites. So who has this file?
I have it. Horton Residence Site Plan Waiver, Resolution fourteen dash twenty-five. Whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Joshua Horton on July twelfth, two thousand and fourteen for property located at twenty-five Garden Street in the Town of Hyde Park. And whereas, whereas, whereas the changes are not significant in nature and are in character with the neighborhood. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Horton Residence regarding the specific request that submitted to the Building Department on July eighth, two thousand and fourteen by Mr. Horton, owner, twenty-five Garden Street, Hyde Park. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item on the agenda is a brief discussion of the assisted living facility. The, this is the former hobo. The applicant has been granted now two extensions and there are no more. And the approval will lapse on the second of September of two thousand and fourteen. And in the meantime, if you recall, because we approved it, concept, we approved with, they could either connect to the existing commercial sewerage system operated by Town and City Poughkeepsie, or they could do their own septic. They opted to do their own septic. Once they did that, then they discovered that the septic is really large and that it's going to involve more than an acre of disturbance, which initially it was not. And so now that it says more of an acre of disturbance, it requires a SWIP.
Yep.
So that's one portion of it. In, at the same time, Mr. Rogers, the applicant, has indicated he wants to put solar panels on the roof because it's a flat roof. It's been disguised effectively by the new facade, but it's still a flat roof. So it's kind of ideal for solar panels. But solar panels, that normally would require, you just saw, we had just had two solar panels that require site plan review. So what we.
That's only because it was in the SASS.
In the SASS. But this is, this is a commercial. This is, this is what Tad, this is how Ms. Moss chooses to look at it, put it that way.
You can't see them.
Now, you, I know. I think she wants a record or some, I'm sorry, they won't be flat. It's on the flat roof.
They have, they're going to be angled. They have to have an angle.
They're angled.
They're only angled about five to ten degrees. They're not angled very high.
Yeah, she would know.
Yeah, they don't, if they jack them up like that, they're done incorrectly.
Yeah. I mean, they shouldn't be as visible from any place, but, so I'm just bringing this up because Mr. Zataro thought we could amend the initial approval. Tad seems to want to do the site plan amendment, but I don't know how I'm going to sign it because they won't be able to make the conditions.
Here's what, here's what I was trying to get to and how we get to it, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But the maps have obviously not been signed yet. Most of the previous conditions that we had have been satisfied by the most, by the most current plans we have except for the item for either, you know, the connection to the Town of Poughkeepsie Sewer or Dutchess County Health Department approval. So that one, so that one, you know, is open. We just received this week the SWIP. So what I was thinking is if there's some way to, I'll use the word, reapprove, you know, the project where we could, we could hopefully do it by September the second and we would reapprove it with new conditions, one of which would be, you know, the septic and then the final review and approval of the SWIP by our office, which would then in turn restart, you know, the time clock for him. And then he would have another, what is it, year? So that was my thought process, how we get to that. I mean, I thought because the maps haven't been signed yet, that it would just be do a new resolution because the maps haven't been signed yet, but maybe that's not the right way to do it. But that was my thought process to get him reapproved with new conditions, only probably like a couple. And then it starts his time clock again. And I know he is diligently working to try to get the Health Department to sign off on, you know, his septic. And, you know, so we'll work with him to get the stormwater pollution prevention plan done. He just wants to try to preserve his September second date. So. So having said all that.
Can you weigh in on this one? Because Ms. Moss, I know, isn't here and it's sort of her responsibility is to figure out how to process applications.
So she had suggested treating it as a site plan amendment, and that is just the smallest fee. And it would, the fee would be based on the area of change, which would just be the septic field. So it would be very minor fee wise. I'm comfortable with that approach because it does start the clock over clearly. In the past, sometimes we've amended the resolution to add or change a condition.
But that won't change the clock.
But that doesn't change the clock.
Oh, well, it sounds like he has to have the clock changed anyway. So we've got to go that route.
We do have, and we do have.
Three hundred dollars. It's the cheapest one.
Yeah, no, he's, no, no, that's not, that's not an issue. You know, the money, well, it's always an issue. But in this case, for that amount of money to get his time clock restarted, it's not an issue.
Yeah.
But, you know, in this case, we do have, we do have new information. We've got, you know, the SWIP. And, you know, now we know that, you know, the septic system, you know, is bigger. So we do have new information. So that's why we're thinking, okay, well, we can, you know, amend it or reapprove.
They need to be on the agenda for the next meeting so that if you have to have a public hearing, you can do that the first week in September.
Well, does that make it by the second, though, or?
Our next meeting is the September thirtieth. And after that is the third.
Oh, this is already the second meeting?
No, this is the first meeting.
And then we're after the second.
So can we, can we consider setting a public hearing tonight, subject to them getting the applicant?
We don't have.
So what happens, what happens if it's the second, though? I mean, what, even though the old plan expires, if the new plan is approved a few days later, are there any, what are the pitfalls?
I'd ask my attorney.
Well, looking at you on that one.
I'm not the applicant's attorney.
Isn't a site plan amendment a site plan amendment, no matter what?
Well, we typically.
Does it matter?
We typically treat site plan amendments as amendments to, not just the sign.
An existing plan. Unexpired?
Well, no, once it's been signed. I haven't signed it yet.
Right. That's, that's why it's a little unique.
That's, the problem is.
You can't amend something that has never been approved.
Well, it's been approved, it's just it hasn't been signed.
Clocks start without the signature. The clocks started without.
The clocks, this is the thing. You have a year in which to start and two years which is substantially complete. And that's based on the date that the, of the resolution.
Okay, so that's the answer.
So, I mean, yes, and so he hasn't had a chance to, to complete conditions. I'm sorry, to complete conditions.
It's to, yes, to satisfy the conditions.
It's, it's, and he has not been able to complete the conditions in time. And that, we, we, once we give two extensions, that's it. There's no other extension possible.
Right.
And what, if he has signed site plan, then we could say, we could keep giving extensions to have the year to start. But this is the opposite.
Right. So I guess the, the problem is if it's approved after the old one expires, we don't treat it as an amendment anymore.
Have we in the past changed some of the conditions or waived some of the?
We have done that, but that doesn't change the clock. So that's something that you could do, but it doesn't give them any extra.
So the real problem is, I see it as, we, how do we set a public hearing when we don't have?
The second is a Tuesday, our first meeting in.
Is September third.
September third.
But my question is.
If we took the, if we took the condition and he signed it, that would start another year, wouldn't it?
I can't, I can't sign it until he meets the conditions.
Oh, I think Chan is saying that if you amend the resolution at the next meeting to remove the errant conditions, then you could sign the site plan and then, then approve the new one on the third.
One of the conditions is DOH approval, Department of Health approval. We can't remove that.
There is no approval.
No, 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 you can't, you can't, I can't, we can't approve a site plan without, no, no. We would be sued by Department of Health and we would lose.
So since, since every.
Put up to the sewer and then later on amend it.
I wish he gave us something.
Yeah.
Since everyone is, I mean, this is a pending application. Everyone's familiar with it. I mean, the only change according to Pete really is the septic. I, I mean, you could set the public hearing on that change.
We can.
Based on the engineer's description of it. It's not. It's not.
It's not common.
It's not prohibited.
It's not common, but it's not prohibited. Okay. So, but the applicants will need to, what, what do they need to produce for us to review this amendment?
I told them that we were going to be discussing it and then I called them in the morning, telling them what they need to do. So if there's a, is there an, is there an application they need to fill out?
Yes.
Yes. It's a site plan amendment.
New application.
It's three hundred dollars because it's, it's, there's.
Hundred dollar fee. They are, they, they have, they have all the plans ready, you know, and stand.
It needs to be recirculated to county. You know, another option is for the, another option is for the planning board to call a special meeting for the last week in August.
Yeah, but that's like Labor Day.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm good for, I think it's important to the town.
Oh, I think this is very important to the town. That's why I put this on for, I wanted, this is anything I wanted. I didn't want to discuss this just with the consultants and then try to come back and explain it. I want everybody knowing about this because.
Yeah, no, I think this is very important to the town.
Getting rid, turning that eyesore into something nice is.
A lot of the other things, we wasted a lot of hours.
And let's point out, again, these, this, this unit provides good paying jobs. These are physicians assistants that work there and nurses. These are not, this is not low-income stuff.
It's a blight on that part of the test.
Yes, so I'm trying to, I want to work, we want to be as.
Also don't want to get sued by the county.
No, I want to be as progressive as possible.
For one day.
How many days' notice is this one?
I'm fine.
Five.
Oh, it's five days' notice.
So what Victoria was just saying is if, is if we got the stuff in and if you want it, if you were inclined to hold a special meeting on August the twenty-seventh, but see, that's not going to give county planning a lot of time to get something back to us.
But, I mean, county planning has already reviewed.
Right.
So normally, normally in those circumstances.
They haven't reviewed the septic thing. I mean, and we don't, do we know if there's any kind of a pump house or anything for the septic?
They don't look at that.
They wouldn't. They're looking for.